We will open the meeting at six oh two P M on Thursday, February eighth. This is a hybrid meeting. Denise's remote. How else to get there? All right. Shelley's remote and in person. Wow, she's talented. Very talented. Um, all right. Uh, can I have a review approval of minutes of January sixteen, twenty twenty four? If there are any comments?
Um, make a motion to approve the junior twenty twenty four minutes.
Okay.
All second.
Second, uh, all in favor? Aye. We are on to financial statements. Shelley sent those for review ahead of time.
I did. I don't have any comments on the reports themselves unless you do. There hasn't been a whole lot of changes. So I will just note the warrants signed electronically since last meeting were thirteen totaling eighty-two thousand one hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay.
I have no questions.
All right. Okay, good. And if we just got some warrants today, so people will sign those also when you can.
You got it today, I was saying.
I got it today.
Like in.
At eight o'clock this morning. Um, principal's report what Kristen sent us like on Sunday. Kristen was working on Sunday. Just trying to show us how hard she works by sending that to.
I absolutely sent an email at like two oh four A M. Not beginning on this app. Like, why are we getting an email at two oh four A M? You know, when it pops in your head, you have to have it.
I guess.
So, um, I updated the school improvement. I usually do that about January, February, just to tell you in terms of progress. Also, I was hoping for this meeting, but we have some students who are absent. We seem to have that stomach bug going on.
Oh, yeah. Don't touch it.
Um, so we have to do some makeups for the sort of just the not deep analyzing, but the, uh, you know, overview of our N A W scores are looking really, really good.
Wow.
Which is very exciting. And I'll have the data for you at the next meeting. Um, we're starting to see, you know, interestingly, the social emotional is back to sort of where we were five years ago. You know, just in terms of how many students and the kinds of social emotional, um, concerns that students have. Many more students with anxiety than I've ever seen. Um, but we're seeing in some. Yeah, we're seeing in some of our fifth and sixth graders, um, those COVID years, although we brought the kids back pretty, pretty quickly. Those COVID years have, um, caused some holes like deep down in the read or deep down in the math that we're analyzing and trying to go back to fill those. Um, you know, we have the summer program every summer. Thank you. And typically the sixth graders have the frontier program two weeks, but we we're probably going to call a few sixth graders back too, just to get some of that, um, and the other weeks to get some of that under their belt because we want them to head on, um, with some, but still so. It's great. We were able to find them and we're hopping, sort of hopping right on them.
That test gets that specific that you can find holes on that?
Doesn't get that specific. It does get, um, specific for standards. But the DIBELS and some of the other assessments, the maths, the math survey, that gets really deep. So it's really, really great. You can literally say, okay, this student missed, um, constant vowel consonant. Easy, you know. The new model is tutoring. Not necessarily really half hour small group of fifteen minutes of tutoring. Intervention is for us as well as several other staff members. That's sort of the model that we're moving toward because or twen- or thirty minutes one to one or whatever we can do because we're finding that this, the, the holes are so, so specific that you could probably fill those in about three or four weeks and move on to the next week. We're doing more of that, which has been really rewarding, rewarding. We're seeing progress. We're doing a lot more with buddy classes, which I'm thrilled about. We're, um, you know, older and younger. Um, and that's where the older kids shine and that's where the younger kids really look up to the older kids. So we're loving that. Um, we I'm just trying to pull some highlights. Um, we have our anti, um, our anti racism, diversity, equity, inclusion committee up and ruling this month. We're doing February, March, we have star matrix, our core one, tier one behavior. And so we're on R and we're doing, uh, no, we're on A and we're doing acceptance. And so we're trying to bring it to life for the students. So we're doing, um, uh, a great deal on, you know, taking pictures when we see acceptance in a little charity, but we talk to the kids about what that would look like. The students are going to get be getting a bingo card on Friday and they're going to fill it with ways, ways that we hear acceptance, what it looks like, what it, what it sounds like, what it feels like. And then we come back from break, so we'll put one and the kids get to fill out their bingo boards, little prize round, a little prize round. We're hoping to really get that acceptance piece in kindness is easy to show or demonstrate, but acceptance is something completely different.
True.
Um, no, I had that. We had a, we had start, we started a math day. We had math day that that long ago. And so the students are sitting in the gym. We start with the whole school together. And I'm looking at these kiddos and I'm like just about in tears. And I said, they were like so silent and so respectful. And I said, you know what? I love so many things about you, but you know what I love about you? I said, you can come in, we can have a little fun and then you can go out and you can do some hard work in math. And then we can come back to the end of the day and we can have fun because they're really just marvelous. We've got such an engaging audience. It's engaged audience. It's really great. We have great, great students and great families and staffs. Um, so coming up, we have Read Across America coming up. We have, we've always had our, um, our, not I don't, I'm having word law, word rituals, not routines, but traditions. So we're adding more and more like math day. We had it a couple of years ago. Read Across America has been a big one. We're changing that up a little bit. We had a steam day last month, which was great. Um, we have a poetry day coming up. The students love these days. They really lo- they really look forward to it and they really love it and they get a lot out of it. Also, the recorder is great to us. The recorder comes to everything and anything that we invite them to. It helps that one of the, one of the reporters I had in school. He would come to anything anyone asked me to. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. That was a quick preview. We're having a lot of fun working power up here on here.
I was looking at this teacher's, um, teacher self-care kind of stuff.
Yeah, which is great. So, yeah, they, they look like a very tired staff right now. We try to get a, um, you know, starting new curriculum. Many of the teachers are stuck, are doing two new curriculums by choice. The math was an option, but by choice, they want to get a head start. And, um, looking tired, you know, when they talk about getting rid of February break and April break and turning it into a one March break, you guys see everyone right now because that February break's perfect. But it's come, it's going a little more smoothly that they've had a couple of months under their belt with the new E L program. I was able to over the past two weeks go to kindergarten one day, first grade the next day, second grade, doing observations of E L. And it is absolutely amazing how it threads from kindergarten right on through sixth grade. Same language, same concepts, higher level, going deeper. It's really just amazing. And, and the teachers are very, um, they have to put a lot of work into it, but they're, um, it's just going along so nicely. Um, and then we're doing, uh, U flying the lower grades. Um, so.
And then some of the, some of the districts are, you know, we're in, where I work, eleven school districts and they're, um, engaging us on teacher education and self-care and also offering therapy to teachers during the school day.
Yeah.
Um, so they don't have to travel after school.
That's great.
But can use, you know, like lunch or time, you know, a block to be able to do it during the school day because they realize that so many teachers are tired and leaving the field after teaching through COVID, that they feel like it's an investment in.
We have a student wellness committee, but we have a staff wellness committee. We've enabled the Sahira Wellness Grant in the past several years. So we just, we're just wrapping up a session of yoga. We have, um, we had coming, someone come in from Blue Cross Blue Shield to do something on strength training. And then Mr. Williams is going to do a few weeks with the staff after school on strength training. So we tend to have something going on all the time. We had cooking classes last year, um, but we're sort of upping that to.
I was just thinking about, talked about the students having fun transitioning to like really learning and coming back. It's just a tribute to you and all the teachers and staff and all the adults. Cafeteria, everything, everybody that works in this building creates that community where kids can thrive. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you. We've got a couple of visitors who are looking at schools and things like that. They're like, it's a really peaceful school. I'm like, it's such a sweet peaceful school all the time. We have, we have our issues. Don't get me wrong. I'm not, I'm not denying that, but it's just a really sweet peaceful school. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I just met a new couple that, I don't know how long they've been in town, but they don't have kids yet. I said, well, if you're having kids, this is a place to live.
Yeah.
Because the grammar school is so great. And I went, oh, they didn't really know that yet. And I was like, yeah, it's really awesome. And I agree. I was just, I said, I'm a little biased. Anything else for Kristen? All righty.
And our talent show is coming up. It's the last Friday in March. If you want a real treat, come to that talent show. Uh, it's my favorite night of the year. It's really, really amazing. Um, and I think one of the reasons it's my favorite type night of the year is that these kids get up on stage that, you know, and the new car shy students get up and outgoing students get up in the, it's just, it's my favorite night of the school year. It's just wonderful.
I can remember last year.
What'd you say?
I said, I remember last year very well.
So wonderful, wasn't it?
So March twenty ninth, yeah.
Yeah, six o'clock.
My kids still have videos of that, the talent show, and we love to watch it. So fun.
All righty. Anything else for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen. And we are on to public comment. I don't think we have anybody that needs to comment or wants to comment. Just observers. Okay. Um, unfinished business. We have to vote policies.
Yep, you do. Look at me, I don't vote.
All right. We are gonna vote on E E A E C, E E A G, G B I, G C A, G C K, G B, G D B, H B J F, J F B B, J F B B dash one.
I make a motion to vote on all those policies you just read.
All right. Can I have a second?
I will second it.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Excellent. And then we're gonna vote to remove C L F B B, G A, G C C D, G D Q D, G C Q E. This is an eye test. G D Q C, H, J B A, J H B B A, J H C and J K A. Those are voting to remove those.
I make a motion to remove those.
For a second?
All second.
All in favor? Aye. Excellent. And now we're on to the budget.
I printed paper copies in case anyone wants those to follow along. If you don't want them, I will take them. Well, there's nothing new here. Everything that you're seeing tonight, we already talked about last month. Uh, we implemented the recommendations that we reviewed. So I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. Stop me along the way, but this is a pretty straightforward, simple budget.
But we also know more about the money we're getting from the state, right? Don't we?
Uh, sort of.
No.
Okay.
We'll get it. We'll explain. She's the governor's representative.
Yeah, you can talk about that.
Okay, all right.
Uh, so we're gonna review what we talked about last month, level service budget, even at five point six percent. And you can see there what the composition of that is, wage increases, non-wage increases, and then an adjustment for the ESER grant. Uh, we do still have some ESER money available that we're going to apply to this F Y twenty-five budget. But I always as a starting point, throw back in anything that is on a short-term grant, just in case we don't have those funds in longer. Um, couple of big factors impacting the wage increase. One is the longevity that several staff members picked up. So that's a twenty thousand dollar increase on wages alone, which is just about one percent. Um, that'll be a three-year expense. If no one else elects that longevity benefit in three years, that'll fall off. Uh, and then central office, the cost share increase went up there. So the Conley Grammar School is seeing a significant increase in central office. COLA increases for, uh, teachers and IAs is two percent plus their staff. Uh, non-wage increases were minor. I made adjustments for things such as trash, our accounting software fees are up. Um, supplies and materials across the board have been up in general. So just a minor increase there and then the grant. New requests and initiatives were also minimal this year. And while we're listing them as new requests and initiatives, they're really basic needs within the school building. Um, consumables for the new curriculum, we've accounted for, uh, principal's office supplies and materials just due to increased costs of things. And then that equity and access for field trips will allow more families that need financial support to make sure that students can attend trips and that we can provide proper transportation for trips, biggest transportation and so on. Uh, the administrative recommendations we talked about last month included funding level services and the additional new requests. Uh, we have a placeholder in the budget for employee separation cost. That was done last year. Um, we sort of paid for a non-salary expense with ESER and put the salary expense that we had last year onto the budget. So I'm recommending we pull that off because we do not have any retirements next year. We'll put it onto school choice and earmark those drawings for future use. Uh, we have about forty-five thousand left of ESER funds currently, and the recommended is to use thirty thousand of ESER to help fund the F Y twenty-five budget. Just a note there that those funds will be gone as of next year, so we'll be looking to absorb that back in. So at thirty thousand, we're over one percent, um, that we're automatically adding to our starting point next year. And then we do have rural aid. Conway received about twenty-two or twenty-three thousand in rural aid. So we're recommending a twenty thousand reduction with, with the current year rural aid funds. So that brings our budget to two point six nine percent. Uh, Derry, I feel like that's a pretty good number overall, and, uh, that is what we would recommend that we bring to the town and for public hearing. Uh, so here's just a quick snapshot of what this looks like, level services plus the new requests, plus minus the offsets and moving those employee separation costs to school choices. We're gonna figure there. Uh, quickly, a little bit about general fund budget composition. We talked about this generically last month. These next three graphs actually show Conway's numbers dumped in there. So you can see that there's that repeat theme of instruction being three quarters of the budget. So that is any uh, teaching staff in the building, IAs, teachers, uh, special related service providers, principal's office staff, anyone who falls in that two thousand function code for DESI. And then the second largest cost for Conley Grammar School is operations and maintenance. So we break that down a little bit further and look at, uh, the largest chunk of the pie, which is salaries and wages, which covers about eighty percent of our budget. You can see there again, the majority of those funds go directly to those, the staff that is involved with teaching and learning. Next page shows you how the other pieces of our expenses are split up. You can see this is more spread out. Operations and maintenance is a significant cost at the school. That includes all of our utilities, any I T needs, building repairs, custodial supplies. Um, so that's a larger chunk of the pie here, almost even with instruction, uh, supplies and materials. And then pupil services, just as a reminder, includes transportation costs. So that's why that one is a little bit larger. It also includes expenses related to the health office. So any nursing supplies or materials as well. And, uh, next we're gonna talk about revolving funds. So we use almost another million dollars to offset the budget. Good chunk of that is being paid from school choice and special education revolving accounts. And then you can see the other revolving funds and grants there that we use. With that, our total budget, which is on page ten, including grants and revolving, is just over three million dollars. And that is with the budget going forward at two hundred percent. Any questions so far?
Just quickly, the wages are driving the overall increase and more sayings on that, but how many of those are one-time type? I think I don't talk about this well, but I'm trying to refresh my memory. Or those, we're gonna see those.
Okay, so. Yeah, and wages, uh, will be more potentially have a larger impact on future budgets because we go into negotiations next year for fiscal year twenty-six. So we have no idea at this point what COLA will look like, um, but we will be looking at a new contract there. Um, the twenty thousand that is, I talked about for, um, longevity benefit in three years, that will fall off.
So we'll have a two-year overlap of that, the new negotiation. So, and you said the the ESER money is coming to an end, so.
September, yeah. So we started this year at, what did I say, five point six percent?
Yeah, I mean, the thirty is like one point.
Yeah. We're gonna be right back up there at level services next year. So next year could be a more challenging budget year for Conway because there aren't a whole lot of other places to pull funds from. School choice is healthy and, uh, special education revolving is healthy, but you can also see that we're paying, you know, three hundred thousand of expenses from those accounts. So.
Special revolving, what we take in for wings? Correct.
I mean, the other question I have, we've been, I'll go to the next slide or something, just the amount of the school choice percent of the total, not quite fifty, but that's another dynamic. If that changes.
It's pretty stable in general for the school.
It is. We need to maintain it. You know, we're very feeling, we need to maintain it.
That's why we invest in our school so we can maintain it.
Kristen does an excellent job of backfilling spaces because we always have sixth graders that are outgoing. So your starting point is you gotta at least refill those spaces and then add them.
It's a big sixth grade class, big sixth grade.
Now, we have, I have that. We have enough applications right currently even, well, March hasn't even hit, to fill those and then some. So the next several years that we're at, um, what's this year? Eight? Next year's eight. I have next year's number. I don't have a full packet with me. In sixth grade, yeah. So then we're looking at eight, twelve and nine. So there's gonna be quite a few spaces to fill for sure. Next year, you, um, you mean this spring into next year or next year? So you have eleven outgoing sixth grade.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll have to at least fill eleven spots to maintain the revenue. And then over the next few years, there are also larger classes as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a really good point because we rely on those funds. There, every I A in this building is paid from another funding source. Most of them are paid from school choice. A good chunk of them are also paid for the ones that work in the wings program. So if we did not have those revenue sources, the school would look very different.
It's not all gonna go away overnight if, if we do start.
Yeah.
But.
It's certainly something to be aware of and it's, it's happening at other schools.
If I was to project ahead for next F Y twenty-six, I mean, being below three percent is gonna be very difficult. Right. It might be an adjustment year where we go to the town and go more than a year. I mean, part of the perspective of really trying to push below three percent this year was all the flood damage and not knowing what the funding was gonna be from the state. And I feel like that came in.
One point five.
Where, where the town needed it to, right? I don't want to reinvent the budget wheel, but.
We also have to use the ESER funds as well. So we may as well use them while we have it.
Right.
Right. I mean, we could, if you felt this number is too low, you know, we do have this conversation, we could try to bank more for next year. And so use, instead of using, uh, it, it was called the choice fund. You could use, you could move however those three revolving accounts, not revolving, those three, uh, additional revenue sources around. But you could move it up to three percent and then, you know, split to half a percent of it's.
I think it's better to do what we do and then, but predicts that it's not gonna remain.
I think it's, you know, um, hopefully we'll have someone from the committee and select board at our
March.
March meeting. And so I think we can kind of talk about.
They usually come.
And to talk about the state revenue, like you brought up the rain, the governor's budget is out. Um, chapter seventy for Conway is gonna be at the minimum per pupil increase because enrollment is steady. As you said, even our resident enrollment is steady. We're not seeing a significant increase. So the town will only receive, as it stands right now, thirty dollars per pupil. The House and the Senate may increase that to sixty dollars. But we're talking about, what? Four thousand dollars in that. It's, it's so minimal. Um, we don't receive SOA money because we're in that full harmless state, which means that our enrollment is stagnant or not growing. Um, the other thing that we're watching really closely is rural aid. Um, one, the governor changed the language in what she's proposing for the rural aid bill so that it would be more competitive versus right now, it's based on, um, a formula on student density in your town. Uh, we think that the House and the Senate will stay with the formula because she tried to do the same last year as well. And they kept it with the same formula. So we think we'll be okay there. It is funded legally right now.
And when you use the term competitive, what do they mean by the language? Kind of refers to like, what are you going to do to save money by using this money? By regionalizing and consolidating that kind of stuff. That is how Eastern Mass looks at Western Mass. Every, you know, we should all be one district. We can bus kids an hour and a half to school. They don't really understand that. How it can work. So they're trying to.
And if the language is changed, if the House and the Senate went along with it, it'll be much like SOA funding where the districts that are already getting the most chapter seventy and the most SOA money are getting more rural aid than small districts like us. So it sort of defeats the purpose of what this funds were supposed to be for.
Right.
So, so politically where things are, are sitting now and, um, we've been going through a lot of different things where people, um, Shelley and I went to a meeting last Friday with the, um, taxpayers association, which is a nonpartisan group that kind of looks at the, um, governor's budget and kind of does a lot of auditing of what's going on in the state. And they said that this is an interesting year because the revenue keeps on coming in lower and lowering each month.
Why is that?
People are not either making money or paying taxes.
Right. That's what I was like, is it a collection issue?
Well, it's sometimes a question, but it's more, it's the big corporations where it moves that money. So if their revenues are down or if they move corporate headquarters or if they do those kind of things, that number's gonna come down.
Except we have marijuana and we have the lottery that's supposed to, a lot of, and the millionaire's tax.
So the millionaire tax is funding the universal free lunch or.
So we got new money and they said, oh, here's a new way we can spend it. You know, that's, you know, yes, all students should be, but I'm kind of, there are people that can afford to pay this much. So I, I'm kind of on the, on the, we talked either way on that one, but so I'll talk about. Great. But I'll, I'll talk about each one of those. So one, they said that, one thing that's different is that in other years, the, um, governor's budget is usually the most conservative. Um, and in this case, um, the House and Senate might actually become more conservative than that. So that means you may see reductions in what the governor comes out because usually you can go with a governor, you know, for everything. So we don't know where they would kind of pull it from, you know, there, you know, and it's gonna be politics. But we're connected to everything else. So the town gets hit by a ton of the other different reductions and, you know, you know, chapter ninety, which is your roads or those kind of things. If they get less than, they have to backlog from their other accounts. So everybody gets hurt. Almost everybody. There's major reductions. Um, so there's one thing they said, keep an eye on that. And then also keeping on, you know, rural aid, if that gets hit. That is the difference maker. So student opportunity act money is really, it's something like a hundred and sixty-six communities are getting no additional money. So they are trying to figure out, they're, they're talking about it. They understand this, but they can't be, they can't keep it in this, in this mode forever because the towns are having, the taxpayers are having to pick up the difference, right? So if we, what's the increase of our this budget right now, number wise? Two thousand?
What's that?
Was it eight thousand right now? Hundred and twenty-eight. Say absolute. Right. What's the total number increase? Hundred and twenty-eight. Okay, so it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and we're gonna get eight thousand. So a hundred and twenty's going on. It's going on at the tax. So everybody's. So everybody's in that kind of position. You can't keep doing that. So with rural aid, technically, if you can either fully fund or continue to move that needle up, it will make up a difference where you can continue to be healthily grow. But the problem is, as we know, we can't guarantee what we're getting next year, so it's very difficult. If they cut rural aid next year, um, we'll be okay with this budget, but we're going to be immediately in a problem of the next budget. So we're not paying the year, we're here in the rear, which what you used to do is school choice way back when we first got it kind of as well.
Does anyone talk about increasing what they pay for school choice? That's such a random number.
It's, yeah.
And it's been that, that number for a long time. But costs have gone up, so you'd think that number would go up.
They don't want school choice. They don't care about school choice because the only place they're really doing school choice is Franklin County and the Cape. You know, a little bit of Hampshire County as well. You know, so those are the big school choice areas, and there's no political clout to move that number. Um, Eastern Mass is not, there may be some exchanging schools, but it's not like we have here.
They really need to fix the chapter seventy formula, which they're trying to do, and the SOA is supposed to address part of it. The challenge with it is there's a component that's also based on inflation. So last year, some large districts that get a significant amount of money received huge increases because inflation was at four point five percent, which they have in the formula. This year inflation is down, and the rate is like one and a half percent. So like, big cities are even seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars lost in their chapter seventy funding.
You'd think inflation being down would be a good thing.
And then the millionaire's tax, they talked about it. What's interesting is that, it was interesting is their position as a, as a group is that they don't, didn't agree with the millionaire's tax. They kind of go into as to why, is because it is, um, it's written in, it was written into the constitution, so you can't just go and adjust it later on. It's like you're stuck with that, that problem where other taxes can be easily done. The legislature changed and how you're, you know, using them and that kind of stuff. This one's really tough. That, which was interesting perspective, as he was explaining, he goes, it's not the idea alone, it was how they instituted it, which was very poorly done. He said, so again, they started using, they used the money for pre, pre-boost lunch or free lunches for all. Um, he said, the other thing is that they have no, there is no agreement yet how they're going to spend that money. And they're trying, because whether or not people are legal state or not, he kind of said, there's talk, you know, people are constantly wondering if that's an issue. They, they, he did indicate there is some loss, but he said, um, you know, where are they going to start spending that money in the future? So he said, the next problem is, it's roads and schools. And the roads is going to start seeing a bigger and bigger portion of that, and that apparently we're really just put together investigative group to look into. Everybody's buying um, electric automobiles, that's great, but guess how do we fund our roads? Gas taxes. So where are you going to make up the difference in the gas tax? You're going to have either electric tax or you're, somehow the state's got to get that money from you for driving your car onto the roads. So, you know, there's different talk about whether they're trackers in your car or, you know, that kind of thing, but they have to figure out how much you use the road and tax you on that. Yeah. Right, but you know, I mean, so there's that kind of, so it's just, it gets very interesting, these different problems. But the billionaire's tax is not going to bail out the schools moving forward. It's basically what they said.
What about marijuana?
I didn't talk about that, or lottery.
Where does that money go?
About lottery.
About the new um.
Online lottery.
And sports betting.
Yeah.
Sports betting is insane. Like every, you know, you watch the Celtics and you're like, oh, you know, over under, like, what about this? Is so-and-so going to have this money?
No, I'm not wearing the Celtics jersey, you are.
But I find it super annoying. I, I, you know, I, people have gambling problems. They shouldn't be prodded every minute to like, take a risk on this and just do it on your phone. I think it's very problematic.
Instead, you can join school committee and take a risk on where the budget's going to go.
For that risk.
Thank you.
Slight poll question. So Kristen, how, what makes it easy to fill, backfill those spots for school choice? For this school, for you?
A great deal is um, a couple of things. Parent telling other parents. So we have three cases where one parent lives on the street of, of a couple of the parents out of town. So that's one way, and another way is um, that often, sometimes when you get school choice, families might be looking at three different schools. And so, I mean, I really see it as we have to sell our school anymore. Um, and when they come for their visit, they have to have a really good visit, you know.
So what helps you sell the school?
What'd you say?
What, what's helping you sell the school?
It's not falling down around them for one thing.
I think, I really believe it's the school itself. You know, if you walk down the hall and you're having a visit, you just see happy children and staff being overly friendly and talk about, we also talk about all the things that we offer here. I mean, band and strings is a huge, you know, parents really perk up for that. Also things, I mean, it may sound silly, like the running club, the chess club, um, the, the steam club, parents are really interested in those before and after school activities that we offer. Um, and then, uh, you know, the staffing is a, is a big thing too. Staff ratio.
Right, definitely.
Classes.
Classes, and some of our class sizes, but the, yeah, the staff ratio, yeah, yeah. We're going to be starting an acting club. I love it so.
Cool.
I, sometimes I'll have, uh, you know, little such-and-such wants to meet with me, set up a meeting with them. Someone else would really like to start an acting club. I love that.
Yeah, we'll start an acting club.
Adorable.
Thank you.
All right, so uh, bringing us back here, next page of the presentation just shows you the historical budget info where we've been over the last five years and what the recommendations are.
Compared to the towns, people should be carrying around on their shoulders the fact that you only had one blip that's even near four where other towns have had to do major adjustments.
Yeah, how we go from zero increase to three point seven nine, that was a blip.
So zero was the COVID year where we froze budgets and we went, and we went not level service, level funding. So we saved from fiscal year twenty to be able to support twenty-one.
Twenty percent increase on everything and whatever role number.
So we had a bit larger of a jump in twenty-two. We may have added a few, like, that's when I think we increased the summer programming money more.
Yeah. Yes, and we had, remember we had, you know, probably fifty percent more staff working remotely?
Yeah.
So we had to have staff to fit in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so next steps, you know, Jared brought up a really good point. Uh, it is something for you all to consider. We do not have to use as much rural aid or, or um, Essar money to offset and bring this down. We could save some of that in school choice for next year. Uh, and you could, you know, bring this number up slightly, or we could leave it here. We can bring it to public hearing, see what the town has to say. Um, we do need direction at this point. I think you're looking to vote on what percentage.
We need a, we need a number to move forward, because we got to know where we're sending it to the towns.
Yeah, I think it's, I don't think we should reinvent the wheel, you know, um, two point six nine, but if the option presents itself and we're looking to move something or conversation leads that way, giving the heads up that we're looking at a larger increase next year.
So the issue will be is you can't raise it after a public hearing without having another public hearing. And so when we go to a public hearing, you've got to post on the paper two weeks prior to the meeting and so on and so forth, so, um.
Gotcha.
You know, there's other. Turn your house, you can move that about.
Well, I mean, we could look at what it looks like to, you know, even if we add another ten thousand, I guess us at three point one five.
Ten thousand, no, no, it's not going to change, it's not going to change the town on anything.
It's just like, give it, next year if it's five versus four point two, does that help us next year?
Right, it would give you the ten thousand to help, but next year just flush it down.
Let's fight that battle next year.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep, and if we're communicating that with the town, let them save instead of us saving for ourselves.
Right.
Not saying let them save, like, their responsibility, but we should be, we should be transparent if we're saving the taxpayer money because of the concern we have.
Well, we can easily say Essar funds are worth.
We have some one-time funds that are reducing.
Originally, when we were originally looking at this budget way back in, in November, we were, we had some assumption that, we were, not assumption, but we were hoping that the rural aid money would grow. Not, not double like it did this year, but even if it went from fifteen to eighteen, and each, you know, getting a few more eighteen million I'm talking about, um, you know, that would, that would help you increase slightly. That could give you the ten thousand dollars you need to change that thing. So, but now I, I, it's going to either stay or it's going to be reduced, so.
Yeah, and at the thirty thousand Essar offset, there's still between ten and fifteen left that we haven't earmarked to spend on anything, so we could put that into school place and save that for the future.
Yeah. So are we good with this number?
Denise?
Denise, we good with this number? Do you need a vote on that number?
You kind of technically just did, but I don't, we should vote that number. You probably should say all in favor of that.
All in favor of the, of two point six nine five. Good. All right, there you go. Uh, sure, thank you for the nice survey report, and I'm going to take that. And, you know, please, if people talk to you about it, try to answer their questions, you know, as much as possible because sometimes we hear people, you know, and I, I mean, I heard some feedback last year from our select board member, and I was just like, how did you respond to that? Because you should respond to that with, you know, we purposely did this because we're investing in our school because, you know, we, you know, we, that's, it's the gem of the town, and we need to keep it, you know, school choice. And once, once parents start thinking you're not funding your school, they're looking elsewhere. You know, then we're losing kids out of districts, you know? Right, so you.
Levels, level.
Right, you really have to take any feedback you hear, positive and negative, and respond to it. I personally think that's our job, the school committee members, so. All right, new business, policies.
So your first read of the national policies coming from your policy subcommittee?
They are busy, aren't they?
We are busy, busy, but the good news is, this gets us through the book. Let's go back to the one section, but this gets us through, um, we're here pretty close. It's exciting stuff. Now, we're getting Denise, because Denise is your rep on that meeting committee.
Oh, good job.
So I'm just going to quickly go through what they are because we kind of do the work today on the first read and that, so you don't do as much work on this here. Um, so KCD is gifts, public gifts to school. There's updated language around the fiscal review by school committee. KHA is public solicitation in schools. There's cleaner language. And we didn't update this originally in the last time NAC updated, so our policy was, was very much out of date. Wasn't broken, but was out of date. LBC, um, relations with non-public schools. There's new language there. Um, and it does kind of get us up to what the laws are in which the public school is supposed to work with private schools. Doesn't have a mention, kind of a signature at school. EHAA, district security related to technology. This is a new policy. And so these next few policies regarding technology, we have technology, um, plans in our handbook, and we also have a technology separate use policy and that kind of stuff. So this is kind of like your statement, our policy, saying that you have to have these things underneath it. So it's not like you don't have these things in place, but um, they recommend that you have this so that you're protecting as the overseers of all things, so, um. So the first one is EHAA, security related to technology. Provides a foundation for administrative procedures in practice to ensure information which is stored in excess and digital technology is appropriately protected. EHB is another new one, it's data and record retention. Same idea, um, regarding record, retention of records, including electronic communications by public officials. GVEE, another new policy, um, is personal use of technology. Um, outlines responsibility of district personnel in their use of technology. JCI, JICJ, student use of technology in school. You get it, um, outlining divisional responsibility, students' use of technology. KCD is the community use of digital resources. This policy recognizes that digital resources, most notably public wifi, are now common public resource of the school, and allowing appropriate considerations there. KDCB is the district website and social media. And this one is to recognize that the school, schools have both websites and social media pages, and best practices include public comments on such sites. And then EFC is universal free school meals. This is an update of that because universal free meals have become free since that, um, since that policy was redone. And then EFD is the school nutrition program charge policy. Same idea is that they changed the funding and the law, so allocate everything up to speed there. And then there's the reduction of one, which is community involvement in schools, and they are recommending that you remove that because there's plenty of opportunities within many of the policies for um, community involvement and decision-making in schools.
So all of these are from the recommendation of the policy committee?
You have a question, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, reports, I do not have a report. Uh, Denise, I don't know if you have a collaborative report or if you guys have met since last time?
We did have a meeting, um, I did, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I did send um, the summary to you, but I don't really have much other than we met and, um, yeah. Not much, yeah.
I did scan that, I didn't. There's always a lot going on there.
Yeah.
Um, and superintendent's report?
Your report?
Okay, no executive session. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn unless we have any other business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All right, all in favor? Thank you for your attendance. Appreciate it.